Sajid
I am Raja Yurnamu Many of you have heard about me First of all, I am a teacher I am here to teach you how to do this This is my classroom I am here to teach you how to do this You can use this app You can write your thoughts in it and write your wisdom and write your wisdom and write your wisdom I am here to teach you how to do this and write your thoughts and write your wisdom and write your wisdom and write your wisdom and write your wisdom In translation, we will talk about this We will talk about this and we will talk about this and we will talk about this and we will talk about this through the help of the teacher but we will talk about this and we will talk about this and we will talk about this first of all, we will talk about this we will talk about this we will talk about this Amen
You have heard about this
I have heard about this I have heard about this My prayer I love you I love you You are wonderful You are beautiful My prayer I love you I love you This path I walk I am grateful I am grateful You are beautiful You are beautiful This path I walk I am grateful You are beautiful You are beautiful I am grateful I am grateful I am grateful I am grateful My prayer I love you 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 My prayer I love you I love you I love you I love you My Lord I love you I love you I love you My Lord I love you I love you My prayer I love you My prayer My prayer I love you I love you You are wonderful You are beautiful I am here
I am here I have heard about this I have heard about this I have heard about this
I have heard about this I love you I love you I love you I love you You are beautiful I love you I love you I love you I love you You are beautiful I love you 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 You are beautiful I love you 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 You are beautiful I love you 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 You are beautiful I love you I love you You are beautiful I love you 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 I love you
Thank you brother I am here to teach you how to do this
I am here to teach you how to do this My God, I am here 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 I am here
Allah Amen Good evening I have heard about this 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 Okay now Thank you
Thank you brother Greetings to you all in the matchless name of a Lord and Savior Jesus Christ
I am here to teach you how to do this
I thank Lord that he has brought us this far
I have heard about this
And in our past sessions we have been learning about the question Am I a disciple of Christ?
I have heard about this I have heard about this
We have seen the question Who is a disciple?
I have heard about this
We have also seen Why I need to be a disciple?
I have heard about this
And finally in our last session we had completed the third question What makes me a disciple?
I have heard about this I have heard about this
We had seen the importance of our spiritual workout and spiritual training
I have heard about this
We had seen that we need to give time
I have heard about this
We have to put efforts
I have heard about this
And we also have to clean up our life
I have heard about this
Dear ones as we have now come to this session we are now going to explore the fourth question
I have heard about this I have heard about this
What is the responsibility of a disciple of Christ?
I have heard about this
Here we have two subjects that we need to discuss
I have heard about this
The first is obedience
I have heard about this
And second is abiding
I have heard about this
Obedience to Christ and abiding in Christ
I have heard about this
Obedience has to be learnt
I have heard about this
Being human in nature we are disobedient because we have inherited this behaviour from Adam
I have heard about this
We do not know what is obedience
I have heard about this
But by one because of one man's disobedience many were made sinners
I have heard about this
But in contrast we see that because of obedience of Christ we have been saved and we are made righteous
I have heard about this
So we need to learn obedience because that is not a natural behaviour
I have heard about this I have heard about this
So from whom shall we learn obedience?
I have heard about this
We need to learn obedience from our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ
I have heard about this
Let us look at some of the portions from scriptures to understand and learn obedience from Lord
I have heard about this
Let us turn to Hebrews chapter 5 verse 8 and 9
I have heard about this 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 I have heard about this
Now here in English we have verse 8 and 9 in Telugu we have verse 8 to 10 together
I have heard about this
Now here there are some important issues that we need to understand
I have heard about this
The first thing that we read here is Though he were a son
I have heard about this
He is not a son among many sons
I have heard about this
He is the only begotten son
I have heard about this
That is what we read in John chapter 1 verse 14
I have heard about this
We read in John chapter 1 verse 18
I have heard about this
John chapter 3 verse 16
I have heard about this
Only begotten son
I have heard about this
And we are going to learn about obedience from that only begotten son
I have heard about this
Now here we continue to read it is written Yet learned he obedience
I have heard about this
Yet learned he obedience
I have heard about this
Was he not obedient that he had to learn obedience?
I have heard about this
What is this verse meaning when it says that he had he learned obedience?
I have heard about this
When we turn to Hebrews chapter 10 and verse 5 onwards when we read
I have heard about this
Yes brother please read it up to 8
I have heard about this 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 I have heard about this
May Lord add blessing to the potion that has been blooded
I have heard about this
As we read here we see then said I Lo Aika
I have heard about this
In the volume of the book it is written of me to do thy will oh God
I have heard about this
Is very coming into this world was to fulfill the will of father
I have heard about this
He came here into this world to fulfill the will of father
I have heard about this
Here we read that He came here to fulfill the scriptures
I have heard about this
What was written about him? He came here to fulfill it
I have heard about this
That is obedience
I have heard about this
In John chapter 4 verse 34 we see that he says My foot is to do the will of the father
I have heard about this
Get so many he prayed Not my will but your will be done that is obedience
I have heard about this
In John chapter 17 verse 4 he said I have finished the work which thou hast given me that is obedience
I have heard about this
His life was a perfect example of obedience
I have heard about this
Then why do we read here in Hebrews chapter 5 verse 8 that he learned obedience
I have heard about this
When he came into this world in flesh and blood
I have heard about this
He had many things to experience
I have heard about this
These are the experiences which he would have never known being in heaven
I have heard about this
As we read in Mark chapter 1 verse 35
I have heard about this
Mark chapter 1 verse 5
Verse 35 brother?
Yes brother
I have heard about this
This is his manner
I have heard about this
Early in the morning great while before a day
I have heard about this
He went out a great while before the day into a solitary place and prayed
I have heard about this
It was not one day's work but it was his everyday routine
I have heard about this
It was his habit to do this
I have heard about this
We read about this in Old Testament Isaiah chapter 50 verse 4
I have heard about this
Isaiah chapter 50 verse 4
I have heard about this I have heard about this
Morning by morning
I have heard about this
Morning by morning
I have heard about this
Every morning early before sun would rise he was there in the presence of father
I have heard about this
He was there to listen from father
I have heard about this
He had an ear to hear
I have heard about this
And that is why he always said those who have ear to hear that is those who could imitate him
I have heard about this
He is the perfect example of obedience
Ayde, ayinavideyaku paripurnamana udaharna ga unnadu.
He had the ear of a learner and he had the tongue of a learner.
Ayinavinagala chebi, neezkugala chebi, ayinakalugunadu, naluka kalugunadu.
Yeah, whatever he heard, he did.
Ayinayemade vinadu, danipakaram chesadu.
His life was a life of obedience.
Ayinajivedame vidayakala jivedam.
When we turn to Psalms, chap- uh fortieth Psalm, and verse six.
Ah nalavakirtana aaravachinam chusinadite.
In fortieth Psalm, verse six, we read in this manner.
Ah nalavakirtana aaravachinamlo, ilavunnadhi, balulainanenu, nayvedhamlainanenu, niu korutaledu. Niuvu naaguchevulu nirmitchunnavo. Dhana balulainanenu, papaparihada balulainanenu, niu temmana ledu.
Yeah, as we read this verse, we see, this is the verse which has been quoted in Hebrews, chapter ten, verse five onwards.
Adhey imadha chesinappuru, idheyamadha, Hebrew rasipaduka padavadham, ido vachinamunju, imadha mallitirichappadadi.
But there is a difference when we read verse five there and verse six here.
Ayde akkada, ido vachinam chesinappuru, ekkar aaravachinam chesinappuru, konta chedha unnadhi.
Hebrews, chapter ten, verse five, says, sacrifice and offering thou didst did not desire. But I prepared a body for me.
Ayde, Hebrew rasipaduka padavadham, ido vachinamlo, baliu arpana, niu koraledu, gani, nakokashiriyama amarchitivi, anichaptunadu.
But here, we see, it is written, sacrifice and offering thou didst, uh, not desire, my ears hast thou opened.
Ayde ekkar nalavakirtana aaravachinamlo, balulainanenu, nayvedhamlainanenu, niu korutaledu. Niuvu naaguchevulu nirmitchunnavo, ne raibadu unnadhi.
The writer of Hebrew had not taken the liberty to change the verses while quoting it.
Ayde, Hebrew grandakata, imadha rasipadu, ah, padhni bandhalo, madhala, machadachukuledu, ena.
But we know that, the one who had inspired the verses in Old Testament, is the one who had inspired the verses in New Testament.
Ayde, padhni bandhalo, vakamrashetaniki preepinchina ayinaa, adhey ayinay, kothni bandhalo guda, ah preep, adhampreep, adhey ayinay istunadu.
Holy Spirit has inspired these two verses.
Adhey pasuddaavudhu, rendu vachinalu, preepana ayinay ichchundunadu.
So, it is his will to, uh, make those changes in the verses.
Ayde, ayinachittamayundunadhi, vachinalu, alakkeedaraavudam, ayinachittamayundunadhi.
But now, when we come to Psalms forty, verse, uh, fortieth Psalm, verse six.
Ayde, nalavakirtana aaravachinam chesinappuru.
We see here, my ears have thou opened.
Niuvu naaguchevulu nirmitchunnavo, ah balulana.
Once again, brother, please.
Ah balulainanenu, uh, nayvedhamlainanenu, niu korutaledu, niuvu naaguchevulu nirmitchunnavo.
Okay, uh, in Telugu, it seems, uh, you have formed my ears, that is the meaning?
Ah yes brother.
Okay.
Telugu, uh, yeah. Niuvu naaguchevulu nirmitchunnavo.
But in original language, it means piercing of the ear.
Ayde, padhina padhulolo, chevulu podavadamu, aneyamadha vaadabadiindi.
Uh, now, this is a very important passage to understand, for, uh, important passage for us to understand.
Ayde, ibagam, man chala pramukyamana bagam, man artanjuskolchinduka unnadhi.
Opening of the ear, or piercing of the ear, has a special meaning in Old Testament.
Ah chevulu podavadu mane, padhni bandhalo, daniprathegamana artavulunnadhi.
When we come to Exodus, chapter twenty-one, we read about the piercing of the ear.
Ayde, padhni bandhalo, nirgamakarnam, irukadham, chevulu podavadu, mane visham akkada manu chustanamu.
Uh, there is a master.
Akkada okaya, edjumanu unadu.
And this master has taken good care of his slave.
Ayde, iyedjumanu, tanadasunukuchendu, manchijagurtavinkinavaduka unadu.
For six years, when the Hebrew servant was with his master, his master has taken good care of him.
Ayde, iyadasudu, eh, the Hebrew edjumanu, dasu sumachal, atenegruudina appuru. Edjumanu, dasunukuchendu, jagurtavahichinadu.
The slave is Hebrew and the master is also Hebrew.
Ah edjumanu, Hebrewide, dasu gula, Hebrewide.
Then at the end of the six years, or the seventh year, when he is free to go home.
Ayde, uh, iyadasu, bugipul, edo sumachinadu, adharu, uh, poranikisvechya untunadhi.
He has the right to be free.
Adhanikisvechya unadu, haku unnadhi.
But looking at the love of the master.
Ayde, edjumanu, nekapravam chusinappuru.
Master has loved him so much that he had given him a wife.
Ayde, edjumanu, tanendukanu, pravichunadu.
Uh, so he gave him a wife.
Oh sir.
Master gave the slave a wife, uh.
Ah, yeah, yeah, sir. Ah edjumanu, dasuniki, baranu gur ichchundunadu.
And, uh, the slave had children with this woman.
Ipraya, dasuniki, a, sri to pillal kalugunadu.
And because of the love for his master, he does not want to leave his master.
Ayde, tanayedjumanu, patkaluguna, pravamunupati, tanayedjumanu, adhanivichipadadalsukuledu.
He is willing to let go his only right to freedom.
Ayde, tanuku, svechika po, po, velladanikunna, haku nu, vichipadranikatano, istapadutunadu.
And when he brings forth this desire in front of the master.
Ayde, tanahashanu, tanayedjumanu, degr, pettinappuru.
Then the master will bring this man, the slave, in front of the judges, who sit at the gates of, uh, the city.
Ayde, iyedjumanu, dasune, uh, maria, patnapu, uh, pendala degr, velupalika, anikke, patnapu velupal degr, chesko, chesko, stunadu.
We remember where Lot was sitting, he was sitting at the gates of the city as a judge.
Ah manukchilukadu, Lotu, ah, patnapu, uh, gate degr, adhanu, tirpariga, nelbavu, chuchanunadu.
Uh, we also know that in the book of Ruth, uh, the, uh, the deal was done at the gates of the city where elders were sitting.
Ayde, Ruth grandamlo guda, iyavaharamantam, maria, patnapu velupadu, gate degr, uh, sa, pendala, uripendala degr, ajirindi.
So master, he takes his slave, who wants to leave his right to the elders who are sitting at the city gate.
Ayde, edjumanu, tanadasu, evrechay, tanasvechya kuno, vichipadadalsukunadu, ah, dasune, ah, uripendala degr, ki, baidi, cheskosunadu.
The slave makes a confession before these, uh, judges.
Ah, dasu, uh, uri, uh, tirparala degr, padhal degr, tan, oppukolunu, baidi, chepavaduka untunadu.
And in Exodus, chapter twenty-one, verse six, we read in this manner.
Ah, nirgamakarnam, irukadham, aaravachinamlo, ilav sadutunnamu.
Exodus, yeah, please.
Nirgamakarnam, irukati, aaru, vanedjumanu, devu nekaku, uh, vani cheskuni, raavaleno. Mariu, vanedjumanu, talupunu kainanu, dhara bandhamu kainanu, vani todukoni poi, vani chevini, khaduru to, guchavalenu. Tarvada vaadu, nirandaramu, vaniki, dasu daayunadu.
Hmm, this is what is piercing of the ear.
Idi chevi podavadamandi, elanti vishame.
Piercing of the ear today has become a fashion for men and women.
Irodu, sri purshalku, chevi purshkoda, mannedu, ka, uh, style, fashion aikpoindi.
But in any tradition or in any culture, piercing of the ear was done for the slaves.
Ayde, esamskudalena guda, chevi podavadu mane, idasulike, baneselike, zarutunnadhi.
We who are free, it is pity that, uh, uh, young ones and the, uh, and the, uh, women, they pierce their ears.
Ah manu svechya pudine, manam, yavana balluru, yavana balkalu, kamachevulu, podipichkundunadu.
Here, what we see here is, the meaning of piercing of the ear.
Ekkar chevi, uh, podu, podipichkoda mandi, danayatamemintani chustunamandhi.
Willingly, the slave has submitted himself to the master forever.
Ayde, iyadasu, svechya purukanga, tanadasuniki, enirandaramu, dasu, unraniki, samarpichkundunadu.
Uh, he has submitted himself to the master to be his slave forever.
Ayde, iyadasu, tanayedjumanu, nirandaramu, dasu, unranikatano, vidayata, akkaruparsunadu.
Uh, dear ones, our law willingly took that place.
Ah, priemana varlara, pravu, svechya istapurukanga, asana, cheskunadu.
Uh, and his ears pierced, that is a sign, that he delighted, uh, he, he delighted in doing father's will.
Maria, ad, tanu, chevulu, podipichkunadu, adhanu, tandichittam, neruvetchitalu, istapadiala, avcheshadu.
His delight was to do father's will as born slave.
Maria, athane, istamanda guda, tandichittamo, dasu la, banesela, chedame, athane istamayundunadhi.
Dear ones, in fortieth Psalm, verse eight, we read in this manner, I delight to do thy will, oh my God, yet thy law is within my heart.
Uh, nalavakirtana, aaravachinamlo, marie, nichittamo, uh, chedam, na, istamayundunadhi, aney, ekkar chaptunadu.
We see that, he was obedient to father in heaven.
Adhanu manam, parlogamana, tandiki, vidayudu ga unadu.
But on earth, he was obedient practically.
Ah, bhoomidha, adhanu, aajena reetilo, vidayakannuparchadu.
Therefore, as we come back to our text in Hebrews, chapter four, uh, chapter five, verse eight and nine.
Amare, mana, Hebrew rasipaduka ido adhamo, uh, enemidithomidi vachinalu chusukunnamu.
There we read, yet learned he obedience.
Ayinakumaudai, uh, kumaudaindu, anevideyatanneidh konenenu.
This was, this was his practical experience.
Idi, adhani, aachinadpukamana, abyasamu, anubhavamu.
We had seen that he was obedient to fulfill the scriptures.
Adhanu, marie, lekanalu, neruvetchabodanikaya, ayin, istapadadu, vidayakannuparchadu.
You, we have seen that he was obedient, uh, in doing father's will.
Manu chusamo, thantichittamo, chedanikatano, vidayakannuparchadu.
And in Philippians, chapter two, verse eight, we see that, he was obedient unto the death of cross.
Ah, Philippin, rendu, enemidilo, adhanu, silu, manam, varuku ayin, vidayakannuparchinadu.
And now, in Hebrews, chapter five, verse eight, we also read by, uh, uh, and be, uh, verse nine, we read. And being made perfect.
Uh, Hebrew rasipaduka ido adham, thobidu vachinamlo, ayin, uh, vidayatanneidh, paripurnadayunadu, sambunusiddipundinadu, aneyamadu unnadhi.
And being made perfect.
Ayinasambunusiddipundinawadai.
This is not about his character.
Idi, ayin, sheelam, gunamun, chuchikadu.
Yesterday, today, and forever, he is the same.
And ninna needu, nirandramu, epadika, ayin, ogdeeritika, unadu.
There is never changed, uh, there was never a change in his character.
Ayinagulamlo, elanti, maarpu ledu.
He was perfect.
Ayinasambunulu.
But then we read here, that, and being made perfect.
Ayde, ekkar manu, sambunusiddipundinawadai, ane, madhaman sadutunnamu.
Uh, what is the meaning of this particular portion, where we read that, and being made perfect?
Ayde, ekkar sadabadana pakarmo, ayinasambudhu, siddipundinawadai, ane, danke, artam emidi ante.
The answer is linked to the, uh, continuation of the sentence.
Ah, ay, danikjavabu, iyavaki, puutti, ay, dadlo, untrunadhi.
He became the author of eternal salvation.
Adhanu, man, nittirakshanaku, karakudayenu, aneyamadu unnadhi.
He became the author of eternal salvation.
Ah, manandri, nittirakshanaku, ayinakarakudayenu.
He is Lord.
Ayinapravu.
He is Savior.
Ayinarakshiguru.
Only Savior can offer salvation.
Rakshiguru, ekkade, manukrakshinadajjegaldu.
To offer salvation, the Savior must be perfect.
Man rakshina, alak, anugrichidanik, ayinak, kaavichin, sharuddhu, ayin, sambunulu ga unnavalenu.
Which means that, the Savior must have finished the work of salvation.
Danartamo, rakshiguru, rakshinakarimu, puutti chayavalsi unnadhi.
And to finish the work of salvation, he came into this world and went on to the cross to finish the work of our salvation.
Ah, rakshinakarim puutti chedan korkey, ayin ilokanikochinadu, siluva ekkadu, alak, rakshinakarim, mugichunadu.
In our previous session, we had seen what it meant when he said, it is finished.
Manakata kudigalo, uh, iyasamapdoma, nenadanik, aptamemudhu, mano, kata kudigalo chusukunnamu.
He came into this world.
Ayin ilokanikochadu.
He took birth as a man, yet without sin.
Ayinamavunulu, puttadu, gani, ayin, ayin, paapum ledu.
He suffered.
Ayinasamapundadu.
He was tested and tried and tempted.
Ayinsoinchabadadu, apar, uh, ayin, samapetabadadu.
Uh, in his birth, in his death, in his resurrection and ascension, he completed the work of our salvation.
Ayinputtigalo, ayin, naragalo, ayin, manamlo, ah, chedu, thana, rakshinakarim, nanapuutti chesunadu.
He did all that was necessary to save us from ourselves.
Manalandani, paapunijrakshinjanik, avsaramana, vanniyu, ayin, puutika neruvetchadu.
He glorified father.
Ayin tandini, mayavaparchunadu.
And he was glorified by father.
Ayin tandidara, guda, mayavaparchabadi unadu.
He became the author of our eternal salvation.
Ayinaman, nittirakshanaku, karakudayenu.
Because he completed the work of our salvation.
Endukande, ayinaman, rakshinakarim, nanapuutti, gar, neruvetchunadu.
Uh, dear ones, when we turn a Bible to John, chapter fourteen.
Ah, priemana varlara, manabible, yohansvatho, padnalu, adham, kippinappuru.
Uh, let us read from verse two.
Ah, yohansvatho, padnalu, adhamo, rendavachinamunju chusunnamu. Ah. Na tandriida, anegani vasamalu, kalavu, lenyedala, mitachappudino, miukusalamu, siddapartha, velichunadu.
Here, Lord is telling that I go to prepare a place for you.
Ekkar pravu chaptunadu, nenu, salamu, siddapartha, velichunadu, anichaptunadu.
Uh, in verse three, he says, and if I go and prepare a place for you, I will come again and receive you unto myself. And where I am, there he may be also.
Ah, mudavachinamlo, nen, veli, miukusalamu, siddaparchinadala, nen, salamu, miran, miranu, undulaguna, marla vachinadu, kundutaku, miu, cheskunipovudino.
Now, what Lord is telling here is in continuation with the ending portion of chapter thirteen.
Ah, marie, ekkar pravu, yemi, madhachapturanande, padhuvadhamlo, mugimbo, lo, chappadina, madhala, ku, idi, sammanamunnadhi.
Uh, in chapter thirteen, verse thirty-six, Peter is asking Lord a question, where are you going?
Ah, padhuvadham, yohansvatho, padhuvadu, mupayavachinamlo, peduru, pravuunam, niu, ekkadi velichunam, ne, preshne, adutunadu.
Now, Lord is telling, where I go, you, uh, you, uh, whether I go, thou canst, uh, not follow me now, but thou shalt follow me afterwards.
Ayde, ekkar peduru, ekkadi vachinadu, adina, puri, yesu, nen, velichu, velichunachodiki, niu, ipuduna, venteraalevu, gani, tarvato, ochedavani, adhanito, chappeno.
So what Lord is telling, that I am going to prepare a place for you, is in continuation with this answer.
Ayde, pravu, ekkadi chapturanadu, nen, salamu, siddapartha, velavu, velichunadu, ane, danik, idi, iy, chepina, madhala, ku, sa, kan, sammanamunnadhi.
Now here, in chapter fourteen, verse two, we read, uh, in my father's house are many mansions, if I, if it were not so, I would have told you. I go to prepare a place for you.
Ah, padnalu, adham, rendavachinamlo, na tandita, anegani vasamalu, kalavu, lenyedala, mitachappudino, miukusalamu, siddapartha, velichunadu.
The question is, how is gone, uh, how is Lord going to prepare that place for us?
Ayde, preshne, emidi, pravu, a, salamni, elasiddapartha, lenadu.
Uh, many of, uh, uh, many of, uh, 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 people, they think that we will be having big bungalows. And big ban. And big mansions there to live. And because the word mansions is being used here, they also preach about these mansions. One of the dreaming preacher, he also preached in this manner that I had a dream and I saw that I was with Jesus in heaven. Jesus took me to a place in heaven where the mansion was being prepared. And Jesus asked me, how is this mansion? And I, he said, I told Jesus, this is good, but I have a bigger mansion down there on earth. Is that it? Is it how the Lord has not prepared a place for us? When Lord says, I go to prepare a place for you, is that the meaning that a Lord has? Before lockdown, we are still in lockdown here in Pune. Before lockdown, we used to have cottage meetings every Wednesday. So, every third or fourth month, cottage meeting. We would have a turn to arrange cottage meeting at our place. So, the week when we have to arrange a cottage meeting at our place. Sister, my wife, she would be running around, running around whole week here and there, cleaning all the rooms and everything. She would clean the whole house and rearrange things so that when brothers and sisters come to our place, they may find it comfortable. Is that the meaning what Lord, Lord means when he says, I go to prepare a place for you? No, dear ones. Lord, when he says, I go to prepare a place for you, he was talking about his journey to the cross. He was going towards the cross to complete the work of our salvation. Heaven would never be ready to receive a sinner. The place where God is, that is the most holy place. A sinner can never enter into that place. But our high priest, who was the sacrifice, he offered himself upon the cross. And by his blood, he entered into the most holy place. He had prepared the way, for he is the way. And now where he is, we are in him. Oh, dear ones, that is how he became the author of our eternal salvation. That is how he, we read, that is the meaning that we have when we read, and being made perfect. Now, let us look at the last part of this verse nine from Hebrews, chapter five. We see here. And he became, he became the author of eternal salvation unto all them that obey him. All that obey him. He is the source of salvation for all who are obedient to him. Basic doctrine of salvation, we learn that salvation is based upon faith, not works. But it is also important for us to understand where there is faith, there is obedience, there is work. When we turn to Titus. Titus, chapter two. Verse eleven to fourteen. As we read this passage, we see that the grace of God that bringeth salvation had appeared at all men. And this grace is teaching us that we should deny all ungodliness and worldly things. And we should be looking forward for the blessed hope that is when Lord will come and take us home. And in verse fourteen, we read that, who gave himself for us that he might redeem us. From all iniquity and purify unto himself a peculiar people zealous of good works. He has redeemed us from all of our iniquities and purified us unto himself a peculiar people. Now, what is the characteristic feature of these peculiar people? Zealous to do good works. That is obedience. That is works. Works which have originated because of faith. James writes, show me your faith without works and I will show you my faith with works. Faith brings obedience. Dear ones, therefore, we are instructed to obey him in faith. Is obedience is of our old nature that we had inherited from Adam. But obedience is a new nature which we have to learn from Lord Jesus Christ. You that believe, it is about those who obey. As we have a little time ahead, let me go quickly to the second, second part of it. Let us turn to John, chapter fifteen. And read from verse one to verse nine. Our tandoori nae laa gu preemin cheno, nene no, mimmuno ala ge preemin chitini, naa preemayundo nilchindodi. As we read this portion, the first thing that we have seen that it is. The responsibility of every believer is to obey. Now, in this portion, we see the second very important thing, that is abiding in Christ. I will not go into the details of true vine and the father being husbandman. And you also know that when Lord is telling himself as true vine, we believers are the branches. Now, in this passage, we see three types of branches. The classification of these branches is based on the word abide. We can classify these three branches in two groups. Two branches are they that abide and one is the one which do not abide. Now, among those that abide, there are again two types of branches. One that bear fruit and one that does not bear fruit. Abiding in wine is about a believer's position in Christ. It is about his personal relationship, intimate relationship with the Lord. When we talk about the branch which does not abide, we read in verse six, if a man abide not in me. Which means that it was abiding, but now it is not abiding. Which means that it was supposed to be abiding in Christ, in Christ, but not now it is not abiding in Christ. So, this word abide is about the close intimate relation that a branch, that is a believer should have with Christ. The believer that abides in Christ, he gets nourishment from the Lord. And as he gets nourishment, he brings fruits. We abide in Lord by spending time in prayers, spending time in studying the Word, spending time in meditating the Word. Spending time in learning how to obey his word and demonstrating his moral characters in us. We also abide in him by continuing having, by having a fellowship with saints and continuing in the fellowship. Before I go any further, there is one, one very important thing that I want to share with you about the fellowship with saints. Because these are the days when the fellowship with saints is looked down. People are not getting encouragement to continue in fellowship with saints. In Hebrews, chapter ten, verse twenty five, we see that as the day of the Lord. When, as we see, look at the day as it approaches closer, we need to be in fellowship more and more and encourage others also to be in. When we come to first John, chapter one, verse seven. This verse had made a great impact upon my personal view about fellowship with the saints. Let us quickly look at this verse and close this session. But if we walk in the light as he is in the light. First point, he is in the light. He is light. And we read here, if we walk in light. That is, when we abide in him, when we have a personal relationship with the Lord. That is, when we abide in Him, when we have a personal relationship with the Lord.
Aide danadu maayindu nilichindadu edala, ayanlo manu vekthikata samvandam manu kaliyunadlaite.
So we walk in light as He is in light.
Ayanavilugulu unnadchindu prakarum manu kuda vilugulu unnadchavadunga undunam.
There are two outcomes.
Daanluunchi rendu falital raanunnaai.
The first outcome is we have fellowship with one another.
Daanlu ochin modadi nee falidamendre manu okardo okaru savasakaliyundam.
We have fellowship with one another.
Manu okardo okaru savasakaliyundunam.
Have you understood this?
Dine atthadusukunara.
Giving importance to the fellowship with the saints, it means that I am right in my work with my Lord.
Aide pasudhalu dho savasakaliyunana ante dani atthamlo, prabhu do sariyana samvandam nen kaliyunana nani attham.
When I have the right relationship with my Savior, I will have a relationship with the fellow saints.
Na rakshigundu sariyana samvandam nen kaliyunapuru, maru savasamlo saviswasyaluto sariyana samvandam kaliyundano.
And what is the second benefit of this?
Maru dinnu chuchina rendu laavamayamitante.
We read here, and the blood of Jesus Christ His Son cleanseth us from all sin.
Aide ayanakumadunak esurakthumum, prati paavamundi manalano poyutuluguna cheyuno.
When we are in the fellowship of saints.
Manu pasudhalu savasunno undina puru.
The word ministry that happens in meetings.
Ah, kudikalolo parichere ayan maadu atthamayamitante.
Be it worship, be it prayer meeting, be it Bible study, be it cottage meeting.
Adi e kudikakani, aaradana kudikani, pradhana kudikani, neda cottage meetingana kaniandi.
Wherever we have the word ministry, we see that these words have their effect upon us.
Aide ekkare naa kudikunapuru, i vaakhyalu manameeda, ah prabhavam karuparchiduga undunai.
These words stand before us as a mirror and they show where we fail.
I vaakhyalai manedudu adhamlaaga undunai, armanarichidani margamnu kuda chupisunai.
The fellowship of saints encourages us to accept where we have fallen.
Aide pasudhalu dho savasam manu kaliyunapuru, manu ekkare ekkare padipodunamana visyalu manu chupichchiduga undunadi.
Ah, it is in this fellowship of saints, we realize that we need to confess our sins.
Ilandi pasudhalu savasamlo, manu oppugavachina tapulu manu gutterutamu dani, ah, guttteriavadunga undunam.
It is by the word ministry that is happening in the fellowship of saints.
Aide pasudhalu savasamlo vaakhy parichina darugutunapuru.
And as we confess our sins, we see that the blood of Jesus Christ His Son cleanseth us from all sins.
Aide manu paavamunu oppu napuru aankumadu esurakthumum, prati paavamundi manu kadigipoyutuluka cheyuno.
Dear ones, let us give a very, let us give an important place to the meetings or the assembly.
Ah premena varara, sangayuka savasala, savasam mane maadu ochinupuru manu, ah daanlo jaruvalsini, pramukkamayana baadhitam manu neruvachavallanu.
These days, we have believers with itching ears.
Ah maru eerozillo viswasyaluku durudachavulu kaliyundunadu.
They have their favorite speakers in the assembly.
Ah varu, varu kudikalolo varu abimanavaina, ah prasangikulu varu kundunadu.
Elder one, he is a wonderful preacher for me.
Ah elder pedda palanana, ana adbu thamaanu prasangikulu nakguani antunadu.
Elder two is okay, but I sleep whenever he is preaching.
Aeegu ka pasangapadde mandu, ayna prasangan jeppinapuru, naan idhrusunadi jepptunadu.
Ah, believers have started getting their ears, itching ears.
Ah aide viswasyaluku durudachavulu kaliyundunadu.
Let us be careful about these things.
Ah manu e vischamujam manu chala jagradabardam.
Ah, fellowship of saints has a very important role in believers' life of journey.
Aide viswasyala, ah, jivitapranamlo savasam, pasudhalu dho savasam manedi, chala pradhanyata vahistunadi.
In coming session, we will go back to John chapter fifteen to understand about those three branches.
Ah vachya kudikaloo, yohansuvaada padadhaa dhamgo chappadina prakarum, ah moodu kummalannu guchchuma manu dhaninchinadu namu.
May all glory, honor and praises be unto God, in most exalted name of the Lord and Savior Jesus Christ.
Ganada prabhavamanda prabhavana, ah, hechimudan prabhavanees, Kristi namunaki chindunugaka.
Thank you brother Jayaparash, thank you brother.
Thank you brother, it's fine. I ratri samila, Jan Samgaru, pathinibandalo, yesu prakka pravyaka bhalalu, athaya patalan kisconu vachi, pratinibandalo, siridharinu prabhu nu gurinchii, chana visyalu, swartham chalaga maatadalu, maru sakkar swarthasandhirani, I ratri, Jan Samgaru markanichelu, markanichina Jan Samgaru ki, sangatarfuna, vandalkarigas. Bandadu. Ah manu, rondo prasannikala guundu, paadu paadu kunatarvata, ah, dharivijanlu aikbandista. Paata, Ravi Khantu, kutumarwartharu, paatindarvata, akna taravata vaakhy parichere unnadu. Ravi Khant, Kiroj Guda. Raalaidu Ravi Khantu.
Ah raalaidu raalaidu.
Mievarshad badu.
Samiel, Samiel garajeshan, badu.
Harshad badu da.
Samiel, Samiel.
Ah. Samiel yavuru.
And bhagavamsharan jeppari amirai.
Ahaha, Samiel garu, engi dress paalam, ok paadu paadu. Anna vandanaa prabhasana, ah vandanaa paadu paadaya. Ah yepaatin barthu sidipara badu da, sidipara paadu da.
Hetsarika, hetsarika paada.
Hetsarika.
Rendu vachinala ante.
Okay, okay, okay. Ee jee vitam viluvayinadi, narula raandani celavayinadi, devuni celavayinadi. Chiddapadi naa vasivari yatraku, chiddapadi naa vasivari yatraku. Yoga yogaalu devuni tovundutaku, neevundutaku. Yoga yogaalu devuni tovundutaku, neevundutaku. Ee jee vitam viluvayinadi, narula raandani celavayinadi. Sampadanakosame potale do neevu, oye tappudu yedi pattko neepovu. Sampadanakosame potale do neevu, oye tappudu yedi pattko neepovu. Ootunnavanini nevuchu chutale da, ootunnavanini nevuchu chutale da. Pratikayunnani kuvaru paata meka da, pratikayunnani kuvaru paata meka da. Ee jee vitam viluvayinadi, narula raandani celavayinadi, devuni celavayinadi. Chiddapadi naa vasivari yatraku, yoga yogaalu devuni tovundutaku, neevundutaku. Yoga yogaalu devuni tovundutaku, neevundutaku. Vandanaa prabhasana.
Ah vandanaa ya, Varvanandu kuchchilgaru ki, sangatarfuna.
Pradhana, vidhyapatii pradhana chastaru. Mahaprasiddramayana deva, prema krupa, kani karamgalina, priya parlo kapthanri, mahaganuda, mahunnatuda, sarva shakti mantuda, mee ghana mayana, mulya mayana, parasiddhamayana, meenamunubadi, meekavelaadi, vandhanamlu, stuthramulunaina. Ma Prabha, ma deva, auspicious call ni kristina semlini, meekrupalo jyapukam cheskoni, sangapiddalu, kapaalu, sevakalu, prabha. Indho bharamutho, prabha amari pradhana chega, ah pradhana lo, vichvancha twenty prakarantha, ilaguna, padhai, padharu, padhedu. Prateka kudikalani nirmaramni mitthamai prabha, me sanyadanamlu, mee chupina krupaunubadi, mee premanubadi, prabha me pranalikenubadi, meekondanalu, stuthramulunaina. Ma Prabha, maru idhrusavakalu, meekrupalo jyapukam cheskunaru, prabha, merwin brother ni, prabha, maru Jan Sam brother ni, prabha, meekrupalo jyapukam cheskoni. Amulya mayana vaakhyasatyalanu, prabha, amari, ninadu dinamunchi, meedu maaku vinipistu, nadupistunavayana, badi vandhanalu, stuthramulu. I vaakhyame, me twenty amshaanu tiskoni, prabha, vipulanga, Bible lo, neen no satyalani, meedu teleparustavastunaru, vandhanubadi, stuthramulu. Alagunne, prabha, amari, ah, amari, yoobu jee vitamlo, prabha, aneka mayna twenty, satyalanu, prabha, khattina paristitu lo, evidanga, nadichukovala twenty. Amulya mayna twenty, sandeshalanu, merwin brother, mechmevinipistunaru, stuthramulu. Prabha, amari, saankalam varaku, meedu chupina premanubadi, prabha, anichna twenty, devadasalanichna twenty, vartamana, badi vandhanalu. Prabha, amari, yoka ratri kala samayamlo, marakavartamana, merwin brother, mechme, meenabai, untunaga, meekrupalo jyapukam cheskunandi. Prabha, amari, tadjuma cheskunati, merwin brothers, nekuda, meekrupalo jyapukam cheskoni, viluvayinati, twenty, sandeshalanu. Mahrudhala ku, prabha, naa amari, sa, pras, taricheskuni, laguna, prabha, mulya mayana, vaakhyasandeshalanu, meedu ma, kanugrechamani. Pramukkam, ami, degalastala ku, i samaya, nee appajapuntunaga, mere krupu chupi, sahamchisnadupinchamani, ma raksha kudunu, ma vimochakudunaina, yesu Kristi, parashadamayana, namamlo. Adigivedu kunchu, pradhistunamutanri, amen. I ratri samimlo, yoobu grandamayunchi, kasha kalamlo, unda yoobu, grandamunchi, maru devanisavakalu, sakka gayavrestunaru. Maru I ratri gora, asanjaya, anintani, manu, yavudanupuru, paacharu, paru merian, ichaatgaru, adlanunchi, manu, inlisho, vartumanandustundega. Chelugulo, B Jangal, tadjuma chastar.
We are very glad to have brother, Merwin Wizard in our midst and he will continue to, he will continue the study and book object, Job. Brother, please start the message.
Chana natchara.
Thank you. We have been looking at the book of Job and we discovered that it is made up in large part of many speeches.
Yoobu grandani manu dhyanuchchundega, aneka visyalu, i grandamlo, ekuga, aayubunatulu, manu gurtistunam.
There are the speeches made by Job's three friends.
I grandamu, maru, yoobu, ayanas mehetru chesna prasangala, manu tiskostan.
Eliphas, Bildad and Zophar.
Elifazu, Bildadu, Zopharu.
Then we were thinking earlier today of the speech made by Elihu, the young man who spoke.
I dinamra, majanusamilo, yavunastu gaunati, eluhu chesna prasangani, manu dhyanicham.
And we began to look at the words that Job spoke in reply.
Atarvata, dani ki, jawabuga, yoobu palikinati, maatalu, manu dhyanuchchita, modalu, petta.
Now, we continue to look this evening at some of the words that Job said.
I saankal samilo, kuda, yoobu palikinati, maru konni maatalu, manu dhyanuchchada.
But the next part of our study, tomorrow in the will of the Lord, we will be looking at the words spoken by the Lord.
Aide devun chittun prakarumga, rapeu, maru, manu dhyanamalo, prabhu palikinati, maatalu, manu aluchinachada.
And in those last two chapters, thirty-eight and thirty-nine, we have the words spoken by the Lord.
Uppai enivedi, uppai tomidi ajayalu, prabhu palikinati, maatalu, naai.
Now, when we looked at the words spoken by Job earlier, we began to see what Job said about his loss.
Yoobu palikinati, maatalu, gochimano, dhyanuchchita, praramichinakudu, taanu, kalikina, nastama, gochchi, ayanayemu, palikadu, manu chucha.
Even though his loss was so severe of property and of people, he fell on the ground and worshipped the Lord.
Ayanu kalikinati, nastamu, ento goppati gaunaputiki, tanashtipastulani poi, tanasantana mantak kuda, leekunda poi, kuduku kuda, devuni, ayanas thutinchia, aaradincha.
He simply said, the Lord hath given, the Lord hath taken away, blessed be the name of the Lord.
Yoobu aichano, yoobu thiskonipoi, yoobu, naa, stuti kaligunuka, anipalikadu.
That's what Job said about the matter of the providence of God.
Devanu nu, ayanu, bondina twenty, vastulu, lekka kali guru twenty, vaatani, tivishmalo, yoobu, a maatu, palikadu.
He accepted the will of God.
Ah visyalu, devuni, chittamayam, dani, ayan, angikaricha.
Then we look to chapter thirteen verse fifteen, at the confidence that Job had in the Lord.
Tarvata, padhumuda vaajayam, padheyanu vachimulo, devuni yandu, yoobu kaliyunati, dhairi, ani, gurchi, manu chucha.
He said, though he slay me, yet will I trust in Him.
Idigu, ayananu, chappunanu, neen, ayanu koraku, kanipettuchunanu.
Well, the Bible says, blessed is the man that maketh the Lord his trust.
Yavuru, devuni, maru, aashtaristaro, varu, athunu, dhannidu, ani, Bible grandu, manu delicheshta.
And Job had simple unquestioning faith in the Lord.
Yoobu, elanti, prashnichinati, maamulus, maru, viswasaani, prabhu lo, kalikinavadu, gunadu.
We remember what the scripture says, on a number of occasions, the just shall live by faith.
Nithu mandudu, viswasaambo, jivichunani, aneka sangarbaralo, lekhanal, maru, teltemaatalu, manu, naapku, unai.
Then we noticed what Job said about guidance for his life on earth.
Atarvata, bhoomamida, ayan, jivichunati, a jivitamlo, nadipunku, visyalu, yoobu, enchepadu, gavunicha.
And we found a verse in chapter twenty-three verse ten, where he said, he knoweth the way that I take.
Evi mudu vaajayam, padheyanu vachimulo, neenu, nadushu, marku, ayanu, kutili, nu, vanna.
There were many things in Job's life and in his experience that he did not know.
Yoobu jee vitamlo, ayanu, kalikinati, anubhoomlo, ayanu, arthamukani, sangatul, enno, unnaai.
He didn't know why he had lost his family and his possessions.
Gutumani, aastini, induku, poguttukunadu, dani, karanam, ayanu, kutilidu.
He didn't know why he had lost his health.
Arogiani, induku, poguttukunadu, ayanu, kutilidu.
But he says, the Lord knows, he knows the way that I take.
Ani, neenu, naduchinana margamu, naa prabhu ku, telsu, ani, chappunadu.
When he has tried me, I will come forth as gold.
Ayanu, shoginchinata, tarvata, neenu, bangaruvale, baitikostanadu, naadu.
If you're traveling in a place where you've never been before. इफ यू ट्रेवलिंग इन डी प्लेस वर यू अट नेवर बीन बिफोर
उनुपन्नडु वेल्लनिकुड़ा प्रदेशमुलो मेर प्रयाणम चेस्टन अत्लाइते
इट्स डिफिकल्ट एंड यू कड इजीली बी लॉस्ट
अधि कस्तोतर्मनिट्वेंटी संगती आ मार्गमुलो निव गाडितुपे अवकाशनुन्दी
बट इफ यू अट फ्रेंड हु इस ट्रेवलिंग विथ यू ही नोज डी डॉक्युलिटी
आइते मेर वेल्ले आ प्रदेशानी एरिगिनट्वेंटी कस्नेतुलु मीतो कुड़ा प्रयाणम चेस्टन अत्लाइते
इवन तो यू डू नॉट नो यू आर सेफ बिकॉज योर फ्रेंड इस विथ यू
नीको आ प्रदेशमु गोची एमी तेलीक पोइन अपुटिकी नीतो उन्नट्वेंटी स्नेतुलु समस्तम एरिगुनाडु कन्का नीव दारु तप्पीपोकुण्डा नेलगलो
थाट्स एक्जैक्टली हाउ जोब इस्पिडिंग डी लॉर्ड वस विथ इन एंड ही नोज डी वे ही सेड
योबु कुड़ा अट्यानुवानी पोंद्याडु नातो प्रभुउनाडु नीन नर्चे मार्गुम आयनु कु तेलीयु अन्नटुनाड
एंड बिकॉज डी लॉर्ड वस विथ इन एंड न्यू डी वे ही न्यू डी आउटकम वुड बी गुड आत डी एंड
प्रभु आयनुतो उन्डी योबी एक्का मार्गुमु एरिगिनवाड़गावन अंदुचेता तुलुकु वच्य फलितमु मंचिदी नेलायुन दियनी एरिगुनाड
ही सेड व्हेन ही अट ट्राइड मी आई विल कम फॉर्थ आस गोल
आयननानु शोगिंच्यन अतर्वाता नीव सुवर्णमुले कनपड़तानु अन्नटुनाड
वन डी बेस्ट नोन स्टेटमेंट्स इन डी बुक ऑफ जोब इस फाउंड इन चैप्टर 19
पंतमुदवाद जायुमुलो मनंद्रकी परिचय मनट्वेंटी ओका माटा मणक कनपड़ीदिकमुद्दी
इट इस वर्स नंबर 25 जोब सेड फॉर आई नो डेट माय रिडीमर लिव
ना विमोचकुडु सजीवुड़ा नीन एरिगुदुन अतुनाड
व्हाट अन अमेजिंग स्टेटमेंट रिटन सेंचुरीज मेनी सेंचुरीज बिफोर डी बर्थ ऑफ क्राइस्ट
कृष्टु जन्मीचे दानिकंटे अनेक वंदल संवच्छराल मुंदगा रायबड़नु माटाई
बिकॉज डी स्क्रिप्चर इस गॉड ब्रीथ इट गिव्स डी मैसेज बिफोरहान ऑफ डी कमिंग मेसाय
ई लेखनमु देवुनी आवेश्युमुलोलु कलिकिन्दु कन्का मिस्तिया वच्य दानिकंटे अनेक वंदल संवच्छराल मुंदे आयनस सजीवुड़ा ताडनी संगती मुंदगा तेल्लुप्त
वन हु वुड डाय बट वन हु वुड राइज अगेन
आयन चनिपोताडु आयन तिरिगिले इस्ताडु अनि
आई नो डेट माय रिडीमर लिव
ना विमोचकुडु सजीवुड़ा नीन एरिगुदुन
इट रिमाइंड्स अस डोसनुड ऑफ डी वर्ड्स ऑफ डी लॉर्ड जीसस आई एम ही डेट लिव
यसु प्रभु चेप्पनु माटलुनाकी संगतर्मंगद नापुनुस्तुन अत्लाइते जीविंचुवाड़नु नीन वर पलिकाय
जोब हाद डी प्रॉपोसी डी प्रॉमस इन हिस हार्ट इवन आत डी टाइम
आ कालमुलो कुड़ा योबु ई वंदनानी आयन रोधियमुलो एरिगुनाड
ही डिडन नो ऑफ कोर्स हाउ आर डी वुड बी फुल्फिल्ड
प्रजलु देन विष्णुमाय एलांटी भावन पोंदिंगतारु अनि दानिकु तेलीयु
ही डिडन नो अन्यथिंग अबाउट डी क्रॉस और डी ग्रेव और डी रिसरेक्शन
तिलुवनु गुर्चीकानी समाधिनु गुर्चीकानी पुनुरोधनानी गुर्ची आयनी एरिगिनवाड़ कानीकादु
बट आई न्यू अबाउट हिस नीड फॉर डी रिडीमर ही वुड कम
आइते तन विमोचकुडु वस्ताडु अनि आवस्था नी एरिगिनवाड़गावन
एंड यू रिमेंबर व्हाट जोब रिक्वेस्टेड व्हेन ही थॉट ऑफ डी वर्ड्स
योबु मरी पलिकिनट्वेंटी आ तन आवसरु तेलीचेस्तु निवर एरिगुदुर्कदा
ही सेड ओ डेट माय वर्ड्स वर नाव रिटन
ना माटलनी पुड़ो रायबड़न वी अन्नटुनाड
डेट देवर प्रिंटेड इन डी बुक
आयु पुस्तुकमुलो मोदरिंच्चु बटाय
डेट देवर लेड इन डी रॉक फॉरएवर
आयु ओका बंडमेदा रायबड़न अटलुगा एन्नटिकी निलिच्यु उडेलिगावनाड
वेल जोब्स रिक्वेस्ट वस ग्रांटेड तू हिम
योबी एक्का अपेक्षा आयनु कु अन्गरिंच्चु बडिं
डी वर्ड्स डेट ही सेड वर रिटन इन डी बुक
आयन चित्तिन माटलु पुस्तुकमुलो रायबडाय
एंड इट्स इन डी वर्ड ऑफ गॉड विच विल बी फॉरएवर
अधि देवुन वाक्यमुगा एन्नटिकी निलिच्यु उडेलिगावनाय
एंड वी हाव डी बुक इन आर ओन लैंग्वेज डी वर्ड ऑफ गॉड
मानु स्वंत भाषुरुणे देवुनी वाक्यमयनी ग्रंधानी कलिगुनाड
एंड हाउ प्रेश्यस आर डीज़ वर्ड्स तू एवरी कृष्टियन आई नो डेट माय रिडीमर लिव
ना विमोचकुडु सजीवुडु जीविंचुन अन्नवाड़नी क्राइस्टु प्रति क्राइस्टु उनकी एन्ता अमूल्यमयन माटलु कायुनाय गवनिंच
जोब असो स्पोकन चैप्टर 9 अबाउट डेज़ मैन बिटवीन
तोमिदो वच्चुमुलो तोमिदो आजायुमुलो कुड़ा दाविदु योबु माटलाडुचुनाड
थाट्स चैप्टर 9 वर्स 33 नाइदर
मूपई मुड़वच्चुड़ो माइ इदरी नीद चीवुंच्या गिन मत्या मत्या मापुले अन्नटुनाड
यू सी व्हाट जोब्स डेज़ आर वाज फॉर सम्मंद डी कम बिटवीन हिम असिनर एंड डी होली गॉड इन हेवन
इन्तोलो मानु सुचे देम्टेंटे देवुन योबी एक्का अपेक्षा लेख आस्या पापिने नाकुनु देवुनी की मध्य ओका मध्यवर्ती रावली अनि एदिगावन
ओ ही सेड इन माय सिन आई एम सो फार अवे फ्रॉम गॉड
पापुन बट्टी निल देवुनी केंतो दूरुमुगावनानु
आई नीड डेज़ मैन एमीडिएटर तू कम सम्मंद हु कड रिच अप राइट तू डी वेरी थ्रोन ऑफ गॉड इन हेवन
पर्लोकु उन्नट्वेंटी देवुनी आ कुडपास्सुमु एतुकु आसिमहास्सुमु एतुकु चेरको कलिकिनवाड
एंड रिच डायन तू अपर सिनर लाइक मी
अनेसमय ओका बीदा दीन पापिने नटुट नन्नु कुड़ा अंटुको कलिकिनवाड
एंड ब्रिंग अस बोथ टुगेदर
नन्नु देवुनी ओकिटिका चेगलिकिनवाड
अडेज़ मैन हु वुड बी एबल तू पुट हांड अपऑन अस बोथ
इदरी नीदा चे वेगलिनट्वेंटी मध्यवर्ती
आ बट जोब वस लेमेंटिंग डेट ही अट नो डेज़ मैन
योबु नाकु मध्यवर्ती लेडु अन्नटलुगा माटा
इन डी नेक्स्ट वर्स वर्स 35 डी लास्ट वर्स ऑफ चैप्टर 9 ही सेड डेट इस नॉट सो विथ मी
ई तोमिदो आजायुम मूपई आइदो वच्चुमुडो नीन अट्यवाड़नु कानु अनुकुल्टुनान
ही लॉन्ग फॉर डेज़ मैन बट ही लेमेंटेड डेट ही अट नॉन
मध्यवर्ती कावलनी कोर्कुनाडु कानी अतर्व अट्यवाड़ लेडु अनि चेप्पन
नाई आस कृष्टियन्स वी नो डेट इन डी न्यू टेस्टमेंट वी रीड अबाउट डी लॉर्ड जीसस आस डी मीडिएटर
प्रत्यनि मंद्रलो मानु एरिगुदुम प्रभय यसु कृष्टु मानुकु मध्यवर्तीका वच्चुन संगती
1st हिम्मते चैप्टर 2 देयर वर वन गॉड वन मीडिएटर बिटवीन गॉड एंड मैन
बद्दिच्या दिमोतीपत्रिका रिंडवाद जायुमुलो देवुडुकडे देवुनीकनी नरुनुकनी मध्यवर्ती कुड़ा उकडे अन्नटुनाड
सो व्हाट जोब लॉन्ग फॉर गॉड हाथ सेंड इन तू डी वर्ल्ड डी लॉर्ड जीसस डी मीडिएटर
कनक देवु योबु देने एते कोर्कुनाडु देवुडु यसु कृष्टु प्रभुनी आ मध्यवर्तीका ई लोकानीकी पंप्पाट
यू कन प्रेच डी गॉस्पल फ्रॉम डी बुक ऑफ जोब देयर वर प्लेंटी ऑफ गॉस्पल फाउंड इन डीज़ चैप्टर्स
योबु ग्रंधमुलो नुडी सुवर्त चक्करगा मेरु विवरिंच्चु वच्चु सुवर्तकु चेदन अनेक विष्णु योबु ग्रंधमुलो मानु स्वस्थ
सो सो फार वी वर थॉट ऑफ जोब्स व्यू ऑफ प्रोफिडेंस हिस कॉन्फिडेंस इन डी लॉर्ड एंड हिस गाइडेंस एंड हिस अश्योर
कनक आइपुटुवारकु योबु तानु कलिगुनट्वेंटी अट्यविष्णुमुलो देवुनु देशमु तेल्स्कुनाडु नर्दिपुकु तर मार्गमुलो नर्दिपुकु गुर्ची तेल्स्कुनाडु देवुनी अंदु आयन कलिगुनट्वेंटी नम्मुकु गुर्ची तेल्स्कुनाडु देवुडु सजीवुड़ा नी संगति तेल्स्कुनाड
नाई वर रीड अन्यथिंग असेंग ऑफ जोब इट्स इन चैप्टर 23 एंड वर्स नंबर 12
इरवे मुड़वाद जायुम पन्निड़वच्चुमुलो
आई हाव अस्टीम डी वर्ड्स ऑफ हिस माउथ मोर डेन माय नेससरी फूड
आयन नोटिमाटलु ना स्वागित प्राइव कंटे एकूगा एन्चितनी अन्नटुनाड
नाई देस इस अन मोस्ट रिमार्केबल वर्स
इरियन्तो मानु गुर्तिंस्को तगर्नट्वेंटी माटा
बिकॉज जोब डिडन हाव डी बाइबिल
इदिकंटे योबु तगर बाइबिल लेडु
और ही अटन एनी पोर्शन ऑफ डी बाइबिल आस फार व
बाइबिल लो नी ओका भागम कुड़ा आयन उद्दलेडु
Now, in all things, God is the most important.
We'll call this the sustenance in Job's life. This was his food.
He is the food that he has been eating.
Now, the question comes to you and me this evening.
If Job thought so much of the word of God... And it brought stability and guidance into his life? Even though he didn't have the written word of God? My simple thought is this: How much more should we treasure the Bible, the written word of God? We have the complete revelation of all that God has put in print for us.
Now, Job said that to him, the word of God was more than his necessary food. Now, we know the importance of food in our lives. If we're returning home from work and hungry, we're looking for some food. But Job said, "There's something to me more important." The message of God, the word of God, is more than my necessary food. I wonder what importance we put on our time in the scriptures? Is it more than our necessary food? Now, these are scattered thoughts, but key thoughts in the words that Job spoke. And Job 26 and verse 7? Please read the verse, brother. Job 26, verse 7. Now, this is an amazing verse about the creation. And what holds this planet Earth in space where God has made it? It says he stretches out the north over the empty place. He hangs the earth on nothing. I once heard a missionary giving an account of an incident that happened in India. This missionary worked in Kerala many years ago for about forty years. His name was J M Davies. He was a man who came from Wales and the UK. But one day, when he was a missionary in India, he got very discouraged. And as he was reading his Bible, he came to this verse in Job 26. That tells us that God put the world in space and he hangs it upon nothing. And the missionary J M Davies, he said to himself, "Well, if God hangs the earth on nothing, he can look after me." That was a great encouragement to him, and he went on the strength of it for a long time. Job depended on the God who put the earth in space. When difficulties come in our lives, can we trust this God who is so powerful? When difficulties and worries come, remember, God hangs the earth upon nothing. He is able to support and uphold his people on their journey of life. Now, in chapter forty-two, there's another, the last saying of Job that we'll consider just now. Brother, please read chapter forty-two, verse two. In chapter thirty-eight, the Lord begins to speak. And in chapter thirty-nine, up to forty-one, the Lord continues to speak. What we've just read from chapter forty-two is what Job said when the Lord was finished speaking. He said, "I know that thou canst do anything." He believed in a God with whom all things are possible. When he listened to all that the Lord said in these chapters, thirty-eight to forty-one. And God speaks of the wonders of creation, as we will see when we move into it in the will of the Lord tomorrow. These four chapters are rich in teaching, and the Lord may lead us, will lead us into them tomorrow. But Job said two things. He said, "I know that the Lord can do anything." And no thought can be withheld from him. Job came to believe in a God who could do anything and who knew everything. A God who was both omniscient and omnipotent. If we had a greater, bigger estimation of God, we would know more blessing in our lives and in our assembly. So, we've thought of some of the things that Eliphas said. Some of the things that Zophar said. Some of the things that Bildad said. And Elihu, the young man, some of the things that he said. And then, we have just now thought about some of the things that Job said. And these statements of Job were, the first one was about providence, his dependence on God. The second was his confidence, "Though we slay me, yet will I trust in him." The third one was his guidance, "He knows the way that I take." The fourth one was about his assurance, "I know that my redeemer live." And the fifth one was about his sustenance, his food. The words of his mouth are more than my necessary food. There are many malnourished Christians spiritually. They ignore or they neglect the food that's in the word of God. Then, sixthly, we looked at the dependence of Job, the God who's able to hang the earth upon nothing. And then, the omnipotence of God, Job said, "I know that thou canst do anything." When we pray in our private prayers or in our prayer meetings, we should remember that our God can do anything that's in accordance with his will. Now, in the book of Job, just to say it in passing, there are some wonderful questions that are asked. And if you're looking for a gospel message, these questions in the book of Job are very suitable for a message. Now, I'll just mention them quickly and leave them with you. Job, chapter seven, verse one, "Is there not an appointed time to man upon the earth?" What starts in question to remind our hearers that there's only a limited time to stay here. We know that the answer to Job's question is, God has appointed our bounds that we cannot pass. And appointed time to man upon the earth. And this is the opportunity that people have to turn to Christ and receive him and know their sins forgiven. That's a great question in the book of Job. The other question is in chapter nine and verse two. But how should a man be just with God? What a wonderful question! We are sinners, and God is holy in the light of heaven. How could we ever be right with God? Job asked a good question. How could a man be just with God? Now, we have the benefit of our New Testament to give us the answer. Romans, chapter five and verse one, "Therefore, being justified by faith, we have peace with God through our Lord Jesus Christ." Job asked the question, "How can a man be just with God?" Paul answers the question, "Therefore, being justified by faith, we have peace with God." Oh, there's a marvelous gospel message in all of these texts. Chapter fourteen and verse four is another great question. Who can bring a clean thing out of an unclean? Job is thinking of our depraved nature through Adam. And if we're born defiled by sin, how can we ever be made clean? The Bible says, "Death is passed upon all men for the all of sin." Who can bring a clean thing out of an unclean? Great question that Job asked. Now, where will we find the answer to Job's question in the New Testament? First John, chapter one and verse seven, "The blood of Jesus Christ, his son, cleanseth us from all sin." The precious blood of Christ shed on the cross is able to make the unclean clean and right before God. We remember the great gospel verse in the book of Isaiah, "Though your sins be a scarlet, they shall be as white as snow." But Job asked the question, "In his day, who can bring a clean thing out of an unclean?" He answered his own question by saying, "Not one." Naturally speaking, no one can clean their life up and deed with their sins before God. Only the blood of Christ can cleanse us and fit us for heaven. Another question in Job, chapter fourteen, verse ten. "But man dieth and wasteth away; ye man giveth up the ghost, and where is he?" What a great question in the word of God! Man dieth, a non-deniable fact. From the beginning of time, every person born, with the exception of Edek and Elijah, they died. Solomon, the wisest man, he died. Methuselah, the oldest man, he died. Samson, the strongest man, he died. Moses, the meakest man, he died. Man dieth was Job's question. And where is he? New Testament gives us the answer. There's a heaven above. There's the many mansions of which our brother was speaking just now. When all who receive Christ as their savior and are born again are traveling to that wonderful destination. But the same Lord has spoke about heaven, he spoke about hell. He said, "Fear him who's able to destroy both body and soul in hell." Man dieth and where is he? A great gospel question for a gospel meeting. Again, in chapter, we'll just look at a few, one or two more of these. Fourteen, chapter fourteen, verse fourteen. "If a man die, shall he live again?" Is death the end, or is there something beyond in the next life? The Bible teaches, as we know, a resurrection from the dead. Listen to the words of the Lord Jesus from John, chapter five. He said, "The hour is coming, in which all that are in the grave shall hear his voice." And shall hear his voice and rise from the grave. They that have done good to the resurrection of life. They that have done evil to the resurrection of judgment. The word of God is absolutely clear that there will be a resurrection for both believer and unbeliever. If a man die, shall he live again? That was Job's question and his concern. One final reference of Job's questions. Job twenty-one, verse fifteen. "What is the Almighty that we should serve him?" There's a second part to the question, "What profit should we have if we pray unto him?" Take that last part first, "What profit if we pray to the Almighty?" He's the God who's able to do far more exceedingly above all we ask or think. His resources are unlimited. His power is omnipotent. His resources are boundless. Surely, there is profit when we pray to him. What is the Almighty that we should serve him? Well, he's the God who takes account of all that we do in his service. Even the smallest action, my sister, my brother, he knows about everything you do for him. Even a cup of cold water given in his name will not lose its reward. Ah, Job asked the question, "What is the Almighty that we should serve him?" He's the one who never forgets or overlooks your service in his name. Think back over your Christian life for a number of years. Many things that you have done for the Lord, you have forgotten. But nothing is forgotten by the Lord. When the Lord Jesus comes, he's coming, his reward is with him. To give every man, that's every brother and every sister, everyone, as their work has been. So, these questions that Job asked are very meaningful and very useful in a gospel context as well. The word of God is quick and powerful, and God can use his word to bring conviction and conversion. Now, we'll just look briefly at the beginning of chapter thirty-eight, because that's where we're going next in the will of the Lord. These are marvelous chapters, and if you have time, if you can, read one of the chapters or four of them before we start. That's chapter thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, and forty-one. Let's just look at the close of this session at the beginning of chapter thirty-eight. It says, "Then the Lord answered Job out of the whirlwind." Now, we've heard different speakers right through the book to this point. We've heard Job's three friends speaking, we've heard Elihu speaking, and Job himself. But now, this is different. This is the voice of the Lord himself.
इप्पडे इते दी बिन्नमयन दिगा कन्वर्टुंदी इस स्वर्मु प्रभु यक्का स्वर्मुगा मात्रमय
नोटिस व्हाट इट्स सेस डी लॉर्ड आंसर्ड जोब
योवा योगुनकु प्रत्युत्रम इच्छनु अनी माट गवनिंस
नाह वसंट डेट व्हाट एलाइज्यू सेड अबाउट जोब्स थ्री फ्रेंड्स डेट नो आंसर तू गिव जो
एलिहु योग यक्का मुगुरुस्नैतुलो योग कु समाधान चप्पल कलिन वारुगा लेरु अनी पलिकिन वाड़गा उन्नार
बट हीर डी लॉर्ड नाह स्पीकिंग तू गिव एन आंसर
ऐते इकड़ा प्रभु माटलाडु चु योग कु समाधान चेप्पयवाड़गा जवाब चेप्पयवाड़गा
बट नाह यू रीड डी फोर चैप्टर्स यू नॉट फाइंड डी लॉर्ड टेलिंग जोब व्हाय ही हैव डी एक्सपीरियंस ही डेट
इन नाल्गव आज्ञा युग्य सदूतुंचुंडगा योग कु आ अनुरु एंथु कलिंदो आ स्तिति एंथु कलिंदो देवुड़ इकड़ी चेप्पन वाड़गा ले
समटाइम्स डी लॉर्ड आंसर्स अस इन इस ओन वे इस ओन इन इस ओन टाइम
पुनिशार्लु देवुड़ु तन समय मंदु तन स्वंतर रीतुलो मनकु माटलाडिस जवाब इच्छवाड़गा उन्नार
देस आंसर डेट जोब गॉड वसंट डी आंसर ही एक्सपेक्ट
योग कु इकड़ी दोरकिन ट्वेंटी इ जवाबु आयन आशींची एदुर चुच्चिन ट्वेंटी जवाबु कादु
बट इट वसंट नेवर दलेस अन आंसर डेट ब्रॉड अन ट्रेमेंडियस ब्लेसिंग
आयन कुड़ा एंथो गप्पा आशीर्वादमु तन कलु चेस्न ट्वेंटी समाधानमुगा इ जवाबुन्दी
ही वस नेवर डी सेम अगेन वंस ही हर्ड डी लॉर्ड स्पीकिंग हीर
प्रभु तनतो माटलाडिन यी माटलु विन्नतरवाता मुनुपुण्णटलुगा योग यक्कुड़ कुड़ा इकले
नाह ही वस अनरेडी अन राइट्यूस मैन एंड अन अपराइट मैन एंड वन डेट फ़ीयर गॉड
योग इते नीति मंत्र गा यदार द वर्तन गा देवन की भयपड़न वाड़गा उन्नार
ही इस हाईली कमेंडेड बाय डी लॉर्ड इन चैप्टर वन एंड अगेन इन चैप्टर टू
मोदी आज्ञा लो रेंडव आज्ञा लो कुड़ा योगुनकु देवुड़ एंथो गप्पा साक्षम चेप्पा
बट आई सजेस्ट तू यू डेट व्हेन डी व्हेन डी लॉर्ड स्पोक फ्रॉम हेवन जोब गॉड अन ब्लेसिंग डेट सरपास्ट एनीथिंग ही नोन बिफोर
ऐते देवुड़ु परलोक मुनु नुंदी माटलाडु चुच्चुंडगा योग कलिन ट्वेंटी आशीर्वादम अन्निट्कंटे मीच्चन आशीर्वाद
हाउ ही डिस्क्राइब्स डेट व्हेन ही कम्स तू चैप्टर 42 देस इस व्हाट ही सेड
42 आज्ञा लो आयन चिन्न विवरण इलागुना उन्न
आई हैव हर्ड ऑफ थी बाय डी हीरिंग ऑफ डी ईयर बट नाह माय आई सीएथ थी
नेनु ना चेविल द्वारा विंटिन कानी कुड़ु कनुलारा चुच्चुन नानु अंतुनार
इट्स वन थिंग तू हीर अबाउट सम्वन बट तू मीट डम एंड तू सी डम इस ऑल टेगार डिफरेंट
योरु गुर्चे ना विनेदी उक्संगतुगा उक्केतुगा उन्टुड़गा अंत वारनी चूस्तु वार तो माटलाड़ी यदी मरुका एंथो इत्तैन ट्वेंटी गाउंडी
डेस हाउ जोब डिस्क्राइब डीस एक्सपीरियंस ऑफ लिस्निंग तू डी लॉर्ड स्पीकिंग फ्रॉम हेवन
प्रभु तनतो परलोक मुनु नुंदी माटलाडु चुन ट्वेंटी योरु अनी दावी द योग यिलागुना विवरिस्तुनार
ओह फॉर जोब थिंग्स वर अब्सोल्युटली डिफरेंट
योग काते जरिकिन वनी एंथो आश्चर्य करेंगा बिन्नमयन गाउनाय
ही वस डी बाउट सर्वन ऑफ डी लॉर्ड बिफोर अनडायटली
आयन इ स्तिति एदुर काक मुनुपु आदरवात कुड़ा देवन की नम्मत गिनसे वुड़गा उन्नार
बट नाह ही सेड माय आई सीएथ थी ही सॉल्व डी लॉर्ड इन अन मोर इंटिमेट वे
इप्पडे इते आयन तेलिच चेस्तो विनिकड़ी चेतन एनु गुर्ची विन्ना कानी इप्पडे इते नु कनुलारा चुच्चुन नारणी तन अनु वानी तेल
नाह सम पीपल टॉक अबाउट अन सेकंड ब्लेसिंग इन डी क्रिश्चियन लाइफ
क्राइस्ट जीवतुलो रेंडव दीवन गुर्ची कोत्तमनी माटलाड़ता
वेल डी बाइबल डॉन्ट एवर स्पीक अबाउट अन सेकंड ब्लेसिंग बट इट स्पीक्स अबाउट मल्टिच्यूड्स ऑफ ब्लेसिंग
बाइबल ग्रंधु रेंडव दीवन अनी दान गुर्चे पुड़ माटलाड़तुन ले कानी अनेक दीवन अने संगतु माटलाड़त
एंड देस चैप्टर्स ओपन अप तू अस समथिंग अबाउट डी गॉड डेट वी सर
मनम सेविचन ट्वेंटी देवन गुर्चन ट्वेंटी संगतुलो यी अध्याय लो मनकु रायपडाय
एंड जोब विल नेवर बे डी सेम आफ्टर हिस अंकांटर विथ गॉड
देवनी माटलु विन्नतरवाता योग मुनुपुण्णटलुगा एन्नेडु लेने ले
इट्स सेड डी लॉर्ड आंसर्ड जोब आउट ऑफ डी वर्ल्ड विंड
सुड़ी गालीलो नुंदी योवा योग तो माटलाड
ओह डेस इंस्ट्रक्टिव इसंट डेट डी लॉर्ड स्पोक आउट ऑफ डी स्टॉर्म